Good evening and welcome. I would like to open the regular board of trustees meeting December 20th, 2022 at 6:13 PM. Martha, could you do a roll call, please? Here.
Yes.
Yes, and we'll stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public conscience, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Very good, thank you. We've got, whoa, I said I was ready, but we've got two meetings to approve, two meeting minutes to approve. Did everyone get a chance to look at December 6th? We have the public hearing and then the regular trustee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And are there any changes to those minutes, trustees?
Um, did I miss something that I've blocked out or something that Chris Woolley was here?
I've taken.
I didn't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like, I don't recall him being here.
Yeah.
From the last, okay. I just thought I was hallucinating.
Um, yeah, because I don't remember him being here either.
So for the public hearing, that was all I had on the public hearing.
Okay. Trustee Sweattick?
I have nothing.
All right, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 6th trustee public hearing minutes as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Asherall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular trustee meeting minutes from December 6th.
Um, I just wanted to add into the December 6th meeting minutes. When we were talking about the rezoning before Jack had stated that he felt the proposed MAP amendment was a governmental overreach, I had suggested that I would like to see like a B4 in that area.
Okay.
Any objections to that?
No.
And that's all I have.
Okay.
I hope that you had suggested consideration of the B4 district.
Yes, instead of rezoning residential.
Very good, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 6th regular trustee meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Asherall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have some guests this evening, so I'm.
Hi, can you go over me? I'm waiting on one more.
Well, I think we can get these.
Okay, sure, sure, that's fine, we'll, yeah, just one right now. Um, thank you. So I'd like to request approval to hire firefighter EMT Craig Burrows at a rate of 1435 per hour for a probationary period of one year effective immediately.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Very good.
Do you want to, well, have, Monique, you have the office?
Everyone can come up, especially that little guy who likes to see himself on the video. Come on up, don't be shy. You weren't shy before.
I could be able to fit that mustache in the picture.
Hi, what do you need, Asherall? Nice to meet you. Hi, is that your dad? You want to stand up here with us? Yeah? Okay. You guys can. Get pictures, flag in the background, or we can do the tree. Okay, raise your hand and repeat after me, please. I, Craig Burrows.
I, Craig Burrows.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a volunteer fireman.
And volunteer firemen.
For Hinkley Township in Medina County.
For Hinkley Township in Medina County.
State of Ohio during my service in the fire department.
State of Ohio in the service of the fire department.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Craig.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Welcome to, welcome to Hinkley.
You're good to go for ten. Thank you, guys. Good day, young man, for your support.
Sir, welcome.
All right.
Eight o'clock tomorrow, I let the guys know already. Yep, thank you.
Okay, so, do you want to just keep going?
Yeah, you want me to just do mine a little bit, and then when the other one comes in, we'll get him sworn in. I request appropriations for $1,067.25 for the 2021-2022 copy usage through ComDoc.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Merry Christmas, thank you. Request resolutions to enter into a yearly contract with ESO at a cost of $2,741.14, which includes the emergency response fire package, mapping and catting. This is what we use for all our fire reporting documentation that gets all sent to the state for the fire reports.
The software?
Yes, it is.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is request amended previous fire safety services motion for the six helmets, six leather fronts, previously was 2,086.50, approved on 10/1 to the final amount of $2,205.50 with a price difference of $119 for shipping. I thought we had that on there, so I apologize.
So, like.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The only other one, we're waiting for Aiden, we told him 6:30.
Okay.
Not expecting we get done early, so.
That's okay.
So, now we're going to, this will pay for all the ESO in one shot, rather than the 89 a month? Or will I still be getting an 89 dollar a month?
The 89 dollar a month is our scheduling program.
Okay, so I will still get.
Yep, 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 yeah. Yeah, the scheduling is month by month, and we're actually currently looking at different scheduling platforms right now because of ease of usage.
Who's handling scheduling now?
Me and Jen right now, or until we get the officers all squared away.
Very good.
All that.
Apologies, there was a 3:45 special meeting, and then we had a 4 o'clock organizational meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so moving right on, Chief Senter, thanks for joining us. We're a little earlier than anticipated.
Um, I guess so, I was over talking to the folks. I just have one item on my agenda for tonight is trustee approval to accept the resignation of Shelby Palya effective December 16th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, didn't, sorry, didn't work out, gee.
Me too. I will forward each of you a copy of her resignation letter. I think that the transition from where she came to coming to a traditional policing platform and with family was just, wasn't the right time in her life for that. I have all the faith that she can do it, it's just, I think there was just, it was just not the right time, so.
So where does that put us? Do you have anybody waiting in the wings?
We do, we've got, the next candidate passed his polygraph, he has a psychological next week, and then we'll start looking for the next one after the first of the year.
Okay, keep the funnel full.
And it's all we can do, so that's all I've got.
That's our motto, the fire department, right, Jess?
Yep.
Very good, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the audience or trustees have anything further for Chief Senter?
Thanks for stopping by, Chief.
Thank you.
This worked out well. They have a trailer to pack to take to Florida on Sunday.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Thank you, you too, thank you, be safe.
Merry Christmas, Chief.
Thank you.
Um, Mike, I'm gonna have you pop your mic on.
You too, Merry Christmas.
The details. And we will move to your.
Um, I only have one thing I might.
Pardon me? You don't have anything?
No, I have one.
No, these are the work, these are the work session.
Are we good?
Yes.
Maybe.
Are those for you to sign or? No, I think they're for you.
Because everybody signed them except me.
Okay. What was the date of them?
11/15 and 11/22.
Okay, that was, I'm gonna look at what's the minutes, okay. Very good, all right, moving right along, Mr. Bahari.
All right, I only have one thing on my agenda tonight, and that's to request a change order for the Bethany Lane project and the amount of $8,370. The changes for line item numbers two and five on the Bethany Lane paid app. Two would be because we had to extend the concrete road, you know, some good concrete, obviously to tie into. And then line item five was the drainage, and obviously to extend the concrete, extend the drainage, so that's where that, that's coming from.
Very good.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Um, the only other thing I had was, did you get the email about the senior room updates for the flooring? Just kind of pricing wise? That'll at least give you kind of a ballpark idea of which way you want to go, like, looking at carpet or laminate. If you guys, and that was at the commercial grade stuff, that's pricing for all that, so just kind of, if you get some time, go down, maybe pick out some stuff you like, and that will really zero in that way on a price, that way I don't run back and forth if someone doesn't like a color or texture or something. That's what it's about.
Can you bring us samples?
I can, sure.
I really liked the hot pink and the purple paint samples you brought in January. And you go along those color schemes again.
Sure.
So I told them, and it's my opinion, I told them, look at commercial wear layer on the vinyl flooring, I think that's the way to go, then we can do the restrooms as well. Have it all done in one thing, but that, that's my opinion. You know, moving forward, if you make some samples in for them to look at and make a decision at that time.
It's just something super neutral, I mean, and maybe something on clearance.
Yeah. And you'll see the pricing difference between like depot installing it, because I pulled their pricing for that too, just, and we'll obviously get more quotes, so just, let's get zeroed in to kind of like what you'd like to see more so for actually go out and get like hard-nosed pricing, so. At least so that way I don't run it back and forth.
Thank you, I appreciate your work on that. Anybody have anything else for Mr. Bahari?
Well, thanks for getting this.
Anyone from the audience have anything for Service Superintendent Bahari?
Would you like, actually, no, I will say one thing. Be safe this weekend, it's gonna be bad. Once it gets that cold, salt doesn't work very well, so just be aware, you know, salt does go dormant. Like I said, we'll do our best to keep what we can clean, but with winds and everything, it's kind of is what it is, you know? So just be careful out there. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Would you like to go home? I would.
You're free to go, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I do not have anything for zoning or cemeteries, so we'll move right over to trustee Asherall. Um, I have nothing.
Is the folks from the FOP?
Yeah.
Would you like to speak now, and then you can escape, or your choice?
You know what, give me one second to pull the podium up for you, because we had two other meetings and we moved it. Well, I think you're off the camera, that's. He'll change that. Thank you, I'm so sorry.
Appreciate it, thank you.
This is just nothing formal, we just wanted to introduce ourselves, we're a representative of the Thunder Order Police Lodge Number 15, and we will be taking over the bargaining for the patrol unit of the police department. My partner is Rob Custis sitting back there, he'll actually be the person working with your patrol unit for the bargaining itself. But basically, we just want to come in and say hi. Some of you guys know me, because I retired from there a few years back, so some are aware, some are not. And they said, we just want to come in and say hi, see if you have any questions for us. The situation was certified yesterday, and we filed for negotiations as of today.
Wonderful.
So the paperwork's in and done, and we'll get started when all the legal people get together on stuff.
Very good.
Thank you so much for the introduction.
Any question you guys have, we can answer for you.
I do not have any questions.
Nothing at this time.
All right, good, just short, sweet, just want to say hi and let you know who we are, and you'll be seeing us around here quite a bit, probably. All right.
Coming in.
Yes, for two contracts, I love that. Thank you so much, very nice to meet you. Sorry, I'm freezing.
I know.
And is that all you have?
Yeah.
On your agenda, you're done?
It's a Christmas miracle.
It's a Christmas miracle, okay, trustee Asherall.
Mine was just, I have nothing, so I didn't want to say nothing, so I'll just put a reminder out there that Kimball is delayed by a day this week and next week for the holiday.
Very good, thank you, so they're picking up Saturday.
Saturday.
Very good. All right, um, we had a motion to appoint Cindy Eggleman to our zoning commission member position.
Hey, uh, before you go forward, I spoke with the prosecutor by email.
Okay.
And he said it's acceptable the way it was to let it stand.
Okay, because we normally just do an effective date.
If you want to do that, okay, that's fine.
Just so that we don't have too many members, does that make sense?
Okay.
Um, so at this time, I'd like to amend the motion to appoint Cindy Eggleman to the zoning commission effective January 2023.
Second.
January 1.
January 1, 2023. Thank you, Martha.
Second as amended.
Seconded by Sweattick. Um, and we, we had different opinions on this one, so I'll do a quick roll call vote. Asherall?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
And I'm a no. And not because I didn't think that Cindy was a great person for the position, I just thought that we should have Mr. Spellman come in as the zoning alternate, which we will get to in a second, but I want to address that there was some confusion on this appointment and the interview process. There was a post on Facebook, trustee Asherall, that you had made that showed that we're, there were two open positions, but there was only one.
Yep. And you had, you had corrected that in the interviews?
Yep. While we've had some people that have spoken to me about it, not unsure about it, and I just want to make sure that when we're posting on Facebook, we do the best that we can to be accurate. Some people, myself included, almost feel that you knew Cindy was going to be appointed in your mind, and therefore the alternate position was open in your mind, and that's not fair to the interview process, the people that interviewed, or the community.
Okay, Melissa, this is entirely inappropriate.
It's not.
It is very inappropriate, and the way that you have treated me and spoken to me throughout this entire year is completely inappropriate, it is disrespectful.
So we're gonna move.
It is the, I, no, you will not interrupt me this time. You have treated me this way, you have treated Jack this way, you've treated my husband this way, you've treated Chief Senter this way, you've treated Martha this way, you have treated any resident who dares question you with the unbelievable amount of disrespect, and it needs to stop now.
I appreciate your comments, but they are your comments. Now, so we're gonna move right ahead, we've got a discussion and decision, we have one alternate position open, last time we met, we had a conversation about putting Bill Spellman into that position. You said that you wanted to both speak with him, I wanted to follow up with you on that.
I think, I think we should do an interview process, the same as we did for the open full voting position. That's my opinion.
Absolutely.
Okay, so when would you like to interview for that position?
Well, it will have to be in January. Which the first week of January is pretty busy for me. So we would have to post.
And we have staff issues right now, so we probably would have to push it off, just with the holidays.
Maybe like.
So we can post it the 3rd.
That's, that's good, January 3rd. And then we'll run it for two weeks. So why don't we plan on closing it on, do you want the 13th or the 20th? That would be three weeks, we did three weeks with this last one.
I think the 13th is sufficient.
Trustee Sweattick, you agree?
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect, so January 3rd to the 13th. Is he here?
Oh. So he's on, he's pulling in now.
Okay, perfect. All right, and then trustees, you have before you the zoning fee schedule, you will remember that we redid this this year with the text amendment and the MAP amendment, we've had to make additional changes to it to incorporate the B3 and further structures. Our fences are structures, in the past, the fencing was, I think Suzanne emailed it to you.
Did it?
Mm-hmm. The fencing was a no fee, but we are having our zoning inspector go out, there is paperwork attributed to it, and with the text amendment, the no fee no longer exists, so we gave it the same fee that we were giving everything else, which is the flat $75. So if you're in agreement, I'd like to make a motion to amend the zoning fee schedule with the updates effective January 5th, 2023, so that it aligns with the text and the MAP amendment.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What, what is a description, any fence will require a permit?
It's the way the text amendment reads now, after the modification, it is that way.
In any district? That's the way our zoning book reads?
That's the way it reads after the text amendment.
And so even if it's under six foot, you don't need a permit for a fence?
Well, we could put it in the description.
Well, I'm trying to determine this, we, you know, the county doesn't require any permits unless the fence is six foot or over, because that makes it, you know, something that has to be monitored because of its weight and size, that's always been the way it is.
But we've re, we've removed the no fee from our text.
But if you don't, do you, do you have, I haven't looked at, well, maybe I should follow up with this after I look at the zoning book, but do you have a requirement in our zoning book that someone has to come apply for a permit for any type of fence? Has that been a modification in our current zoning book that you require an individual to come in and file a permit, because always in the past, it's only been when the fence is six foot or over, that's what I'm asking.
I think it is six foot or over, if I'm, but that's just based on memory, I don't have the zoning resolution in front of me.
So I'm just saying, because I'm confused about it, and I used to read the zoning book in my sleep, I think that you probably may need to maybe clarify that, so that someone who's just putting in a taken fence or something doesn't waste Tom's time if they don't need to come in for a permit for something under that height.
Right.
Because I think we talked about it when you guys talked about putting up your temporary fence around your, your grill and.
You know what?
About keeping it below six feet.
Yeah.
So you didn't have to go through the.
In the current one, it says any fence over six feet.
That's what I thought it said.
Okay.
So, so under the description where it says fences, we could add.
Yeah, I, I think that might be.
Above six foot or above.
Clarification for the fee schedule.
Okay, six foot or above.
Thank you.
Over six feet in height, is the.
Over six feet in height.
Over six feet in height requires a permit.
Well, that's, that's exactly the language we'll put here then.
Just to make it agree, that's all.
Yep, no, that's good, I like continuity. Okay, so if we're in agreement, I'd like to make a motion to amend the zoning fee schedule with the updates and the amendment we just made effective January 5th, 2023.
Second as amended.
Seconded by Sweattick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then I've got just a couple things that I didn't get on the agenda, we had a gentleman come in today, he was sent a random text message, and it said that this group is looking to buy land in Hinkley, and that the town office mentioned to him that he might be selling, and we do not do that in Hinkley Town Hall. So for the public, we do not have any conversations about what people are doing privately with their property. So if you get a text message, I would just say it's spam. Um, I wanted to see if you wanted to organize the next two meetings, one with regard to the handbook, remember that, the work sessions we've been doing? And also, our organizational meeting right now is scheduled on the new calendar for January to start at 6 o'clock on the, is it the 3rd or the 4th? The 3rd, the 3rd, so is that a good time for everyone, I just want to confirm?
Six is fine.
Jack?
Is it right now?
Perfect.
When did you schedule your meeting for the handbook?
We're working on it.
I haven't done that yet.
We're, we're looking at our calendars.
Oh.
Okay, so we've got the 6th, and we'll do the meeting to follow after that organizational meeting, if you're in agreement. Okay, that's on the 3rd, and then what are we thinking for a work session for the handbook?
Can anybody do earlier on the 3rd?
No, I cannot.
Wow.
Actually, I can't do the 4 o'clock either, I would have to go probably closer to 6.
Four, 4:04?
Well, we've been doing 4 o'clock for our work sessions the last couple times we've been doing it.
Oh, for whenever it is.
Yeah, so like a 6 o'clock PM is better for me.
Just in general, it doesn't matter the day?
Yes.
We don't have, um, we don't have anything on the 10th, right, that's not.
On the which day?
On January 10th.
No. No.
Want to do the 10th at 6 o'clock?
That's fine with me, Jack.
I will say yes for right now.
Perfect. I will let Suzanne know. And lastly, we have intermittent office staff over the holidays, so we just want to remind folks that our times for town hall may vary as far as even answering phones, but I know that, you know, we've been working hard to make sure we get coverage for everything, and most, most of the updates to the website won't happen until January, so just a heads up on all of that. Okay.
Yes, Small, that's how I pronounce, okay. Thank you, apologize for that, request approval to hire firefighter EMT Aiden Small at a rate of 1435 per hour for a probationary period of one year effective immediately.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Might be standing over here, Martha will scoot out there again.
I'm gonna move that slide.
Are you still coming back here? Here? All right.
Okay. Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Aiden Small.
I, Aiden Small.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. And will faithfully discharge the duties. Of a volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township.
Volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township.
In Medina County, State of Ohio. During my service in the fire department.
During my service in the fire department.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Aiden.
Welcome, buddy, thank you.
Welcome to Hinkley. Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much. Um, gentle call tomorrow.
You're on my side.
Jess.
Square you. Jeff, thank you. Oh, Chief, thank you.
All right, Martha Catherwood.
Okay. I gave you guys a little packet. Is I have to inform you that, by, that we have a, our second cashback reward from Capital One credit card account, a amount of $341.65, and I'd like a motion to accept that payment and then deposit it appropriately based on percentage of use into the Fire Police General in Service Funds.
So moved. Second.
No one wanted to repeat that.
We just all want to get out of here. It's the last meeting of the year.
Monique, am I good to go? So you're gonna go to work.
Yes, as far as I'm concerned. Yes, as far as I'm concerned.
Have a good night.
Anybody from the audience need?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Please be safe this weekend with this, as Service Department said, please be careful. It's going to get nasty with roads and the blowing stones.
But if you are not, we do officially have pre-pressing coverage.
I'll see you.
Just in case. I'm going to talk to you like three times before Christmas. Bye, Jess.
Okay.
Bye, guys. Merry Christmas.
You know, just so you know, my wife, my wife thinks these rewards are, you know, you gotta spend money to get these. So it's not free. Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then I'd like a motion to accept the updated December 20th, 2022 Hinkley Township authorized credit card user list is submitted.
So moved.
And what then, we had to, I did increase Mike McHarry's limit on the Home Depot card to 1,000, and the same with Kenny Combersum. We had to update all of our Home Depot cards so that.
Second.
That is.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Martha. Aye.
And then I'd like approval of the 2023 temporary appropriations in the amount of $6,355,200.
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You want a formal vote on that?
Yeah, I want to, it'll be a resolution.
Okay.
Obviously.
Yes.
Why not?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I'd like a resolution to dispose of records in accordance with our Hinkley Township record retention schedule as follows. I'm gonna, I'm gonna list the disposal number and then the item. 2048 fiscal officer meeting notes, years 2019, 2017, 2012. Disposal number 2048 trustee Schulte meeting notes from the years 2006 through 2019. 2048 taxes, 2015 to 2021. Disposal number 20, 20-73 telephone bills, 2014 to 2018. Disposal number, numbers, items 20-28 and 29. Fiscal officer correspondence from years 2009, 2010, 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020. Inventory sheets, which are item number 20-06 and also dash 38 for the years 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, and 2018. Correspondence disposal number 2028-29 from Jim Camps who's our stormwater coordinator, 2008 through 2014. And then administrative and zoning offices. All agendas, trustees, board of zoning appeals, zoning commission paper and electronic. 2000 through 2020, which is item number 20-03. Annual inventory and inventory sheets, 1963, 1960, 1968, 1969, 1985, 1987, 1988, 1989, 1991 through 1999. The year 2004, 2008 through 2019. Correspondence taxes, item number 20-28 for years 2007 and 2021. General correspondence, item number 20-29 for Debbie Magaback, the year 2004. Meeting notices and calendars for trustees, board of zoning appeals, zoning commission, general public meetings. 2008 through 2020, which includes paper and electronic and all electronic data. 2001 to 29, 2009. Paying orders, which are receipts and vouchers only for township rental agreement forms for the year 2016. Record and information requests for years 2004, 2007, 2008, 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020. Tape recordings of the Board of Zoning Appeals from 2019 and 2020. Tape recordings of the zoning commission, 2019 and 2020. Telephone messages for admin cemetery zoning for the year 2020. And website updates and website postings, paper and electronic for the years 2005, 2006, 2008, 2010, and 2019.
Some of.
Second.
And then to say that, that some of these, why they're not sequential is that we, some records are in certain places. And as we, as we uncover them and wherever, we, we try to go through them. So I thank Suzanne for, for all her efforts in doing this.
She's been in there nonstop.
Can we keep that inventory from 1960? Because there might be something in there that.
These were zone, these were weird things. Saying in my story of the different zoning thing, the zoning commission members had like one hand a zoning book and one hand a list of this, it's all papers. It was weird. And just for everyone's information, if there's anything we think has value, even if it isn't according to our record retention policy, we keep it. If there's any question on it, we don't throw much away.
Martha, do you want a formal vote on that one too?
I do, thank you.
So Augustine, yes? Sweattick?
Yes.
Astral?
Yes.
And then the funds, there's currently $6,67,280.36, of which $1,078,388.94 are in hold investment. And $4,988,829.42 are in primary checking.
Very good. Thank you, Martha. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $398,173.57. Seconded by Astral. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything else, trustees?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to, before we post for the alternate position, do we want to talk about going to two? How many are we looking for?
I like the idea of two alternates. It gives us some flexibility and also enables us to have somebody else that goes through the training process as well and become familiar with it should somebody else step down.
Agreed.
So if that's not a budgetary concern, I would like to recommend that we do that.
I mean, I've dealt with zoning boards that have two alternates and zoning boards that have one alternate. We decided last year just to go to one so we could save a little bit of money. I didn't see any harm in just keeping one, so I'm fine with just one.
I did go back and look at the meeting today from February 15th. And it was, we went with one because that's all that we had applied. So that was why we moved from two alternates down to one alternate. So I would be very comfortable going back to two. Since we did have the meeting where we were missing a full voting member and an alternate.
So we will post for two.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, we'll open it to the floor. Anybody publicly comment, questions?
Hello, Nikki Long, 1941 Parker. So my question really is for Melissa. A week ago, you know, you had said that there was, you implied that there was some sort of conflict because I was friends with Monique. So I'm wondering if you can elaborate on that. Like, what, what do you mean by, by conflict?
I think that what I was speaking of was that there's a conflict in that we have a zoning commission member who is also a family member to Monique.
Okay.
Trustee Astral, and I just didn't portray it that way. Probably should have been better at describing that.
Okay.
But, you know, we, we went into executive session. You guys were chatting in the hall. You were chatting at her office before and after the interview, and I'm just not accustomed to doing that.
Okay.
Because when we go into executive session for the purpose of an interview, that's all really we should be doing.
Okay. So the issue is that there were, there are conversations then during executive session?
No, the issue.
Okay.
The conversations that were being had were personal in nature when we were in executive session for a different purpose.
Okay, so there are no personal conversations allowed by any trustees while you're in executive session?
I, I'm not gonna, like, for me personally, I like to go by the letter of the law. I was taught, I've worked with six trustees now.
Okay.
I was taught that when you go into executive session for a purpose, that is the only reason that you're meeting behind closed doors. And that the purpose is the only thing that should be discussed.
Okay.
Now, small talk happens here and there, but outside offices and halls before and after an interview is not something I'm comfortable with.
Okay, so.
That's just me personally.
Okay. Okay, I, I just, you know, I. Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that. And, you know, I guess for the public's benefit, you know, you've brought up these photos on the township website twice now. And, and just so the public knows, you know, a professional photographer offered to take photos of places in Hinkley at no cost to her. And she donated her time and those photos so that I could make a calendar about a year ago that I sold and donated all those proceeds to the Hinkley Fire Association. So when the township redid its website, apparently there were not many or zero high-resolution photos to choose from for that website. So I was asked to provide the ones that, you know, this photographer had taken. And I had, you know, no problem doing that. I, I, I think if you have a problem with that, which is fine, you should ask people in the township to donate their own high-resolution photos. Or some, come up with a solution to the problem as you perceive it to be. Instead of just, you know, bringing it up again and again and making, I, I'm not sure what the purpose is by bringing it up. But I guess I would ask you to just solve the problem if it bothers you so much. And that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you for asking those clarifying questions, Nikki. Because I was upset at the end of the last meeting. When Melissa, you've done this time and time again. You tend to take your opinion and try and pass it off as fact, which is exactly what you did at the end of that last meeting. It's what you just did again, when you are implying that I knew exactly who was going to be appointed. How could I possibly know who is going to be appointed to zoning? There's three of us that make that decision. Yet you like to make these statements and pass them off as fact. That's irresponsible.
I had citizens ask me specifically if you had already made up your mind before the interview.
I know, Melissa. You, you always have a lot of citizens that ask you a lot of things. And then you can't provide, then you can't provide anything when they ask you for it. Like your 25 compliments for every one complaint on the, the steering committee. Yet you couldn't provide any of them. You like to make these broad, general statements. And I am asking you, I am begging you to let it stop. This is our last meeting of the year. This has been a much rougher year than I think anyone expected. So I am asking you to let this stop in 2022 and move forward into 2023.
I don't know what you're talking about, but thank you.
You don't know what I'm talking about.
No, I think.
You do not know the disrespectful way you have treated me and spoken to me. How dismissive you have been to any of Jack's inputs or his suggestions. The complaints that you fabricated against my husband. And when you, there's a lot of truth to it, Melissa. There's an, there's an investigation about it, okay? And when you were at, you can laugh. I don't see anyone else in this room laughing right now. When you were asked to provide the proof, you could not do that. And then you further insulted Chief Sennar by either implying that he was senile or lying. You have argued with Martha in public hearings. And you have screamed at and degraded any resident who has the audacity to question you about anything. As a reminder, they're, they're all residents. They have every right. It is their duty to ask us questions. And as an elected leader in this township, it is your responsibility to answer them respectfully. So I am asking you to please leave it in 2022 and move forward to a positive 2023. You can say you have no idea what I'm talking about, and I am not speaking for anyone else in this room. But I feel pretty confident I would have a lot of people nod their heads in agreement with it. It's been very obvious, and it's embarrassing, not only to you and not only to us, but it is embarrassing to Hinkley. So I am asking you to leave it here.
Anyone else?
Good evening. John Kales, 1809 Ridge Road. So I was there and had an interview for the zoning committee. And I just wanted to thank you for considering to reopen the alternate position. Obviously, I don't feel, I, I felt comfortable enough interviewing for the position. But an alternate position is something that will allow me to learn the process more. I think Cindy was an alternate for a year where she was able to get well-versed on the ongoings of the meetings and feel comfortable, kind of in her opinion, and invoicing that. So not only do I think it's great that you're going to reopen that back up. I'm glad that you didn't hastily make a decision that night to make a swap or whatever that was going to be. And I'm also grateful for the fact that there's going to be two positions now, because that's going to open it up to us. I'm 43. I plan on being here for a while, and I plan on being part of this process for a while. So it's going to allow me, if I, even if I don't get it this time. In the future, it will allow me an opportunity to keep trying and to keep growing and maybe be part of the process. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying.
And while, while you were speaking, actually, it came to my mind that we only have one alternate for the BZA. Do we want to consider opening up a second alternate position for the BZA as well?
I think we should.
Okay.
I think we should have two for each.
Perfect. I will add that in the notice then. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 7:02 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Sweattick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.